Everybody in? Okay. Calling to order, the Monday, April 6th, 2020, regular meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Here, I think she's done it yet.
Thanks. Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henin.
Here.
Councilmember Price. Mayor Turbrack.
Here. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing no changes or additions, I don't believe. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. At this time, we are going to stand for the invocation and will remain standing for the pledge. But before I hand it over to Pastor Dunlap, I want to take a moment of silence for those that are currently struggling with the virus. Know somebody struggling with the virus, and especially for those who have lost their lives to the virus. Thank you. Pastor, Pastor Dunlap? Wait, unmute him, please? There you go.
All right, let's pray together. Good and loving God, Maker of us all, be with doctors, scientists, and healthcare workers who are fighting to preserve life and find a vaccine. Be with grocery store employees, postal workers, and garbage collectors who are putting themselves at risk to provide essential services. Be with small business owners, restaurant workers, and those in the gig economy who have found themselves without a paycheck. With parents unsure what exactly to do with their kids for the next few months, and educators adjusting to a new normal. With those who are lonely, those who struggle with mental health, and those in homes that are not safe spaces. Be with public safety officers and government officials from the local level to the county, state, and federal levels and around the world. Guide our Berkeley City Council members this night as they seek to make decisions to keep people safe, protect the vulnerable, and move this city forward. We come to you in the midst of great difficulty and uncertainty. We come as frontline heroes and homebound accomplices as people who are grieving, anxious, and yet filled with hope. May our faith be greater than our fears, God. May our sense of community reach through the walls that divide us and bind us together in love. And God, in this season, considered holy to so many people of faith. We ask that you would empower us to shine a light in the darkness. In the strong name of Jesus, I pray. Amen. Peace to each and every.
Scanning for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. All right, we have reached our public comments portion of the evening like we did last time. We will have two separate opportunities for residents to engage. These public comments are for items that are included on tonight's agenda. Again, you may present your thoughts on those topics. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. Please raise your hand, and you'll be recognized by either their name or number.
Mary, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
All right, we'll give everybody another second in case they're having trouble with the technology side of the hand raising. Okay, seeing nobody else, nobody else, Tori?
Nope.
Okay, we will close our first public comments for the evening, and we will move on to our order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 38th City Council meeting on Tuesday, March 31st, 2020.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes Tuesday, March 31st, 2020?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Price. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Tonight's consent agenda has passed, we now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one?
Motion number M-1620, matter of approving the appointment of Jason Colley to the Historical Committee.
Is there a motion to approve M-1620?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Henin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Mr. Mayor, as the motion indicates, we'd like to appoint Mr. Jason Colley to the Historical Committee. The Historical Committee does not have a finite number of members, therefore it's open to anyone who has an interest in the city's history. Mr. Colley has been volunteering at the museum and working with the committee for a better part of this year so far. The committee is quite fond of him, and would like to see him made an official member of this body.
Thank you. Additional discussion or questions from council? Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. I just want to add that the committee is indeed very excited about this opportunity. And Jason's demonstrated his interest and abilities on several occasions already in an informal capacity, and is eager to help contribute more formally to the committee. Even in these difficult times now where staffing the museum isn't an option, he's able to perform a fair amount of research and support online and has already contributed. And we look forward to having him onboard. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments from councilmembers? All right, seeing none, certainly thank you to Mr. Colley for his volunteering and not only the work that he's already done, but the work that he will continue to do for the City of Berkeley. Seeing no additional comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M-1620?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-520, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, establishing an ad hoc Woodward Dream Cruise Committee coordinating the 2020 Cruise Fest events for the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R-0520?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your package, you've got a resolution outlining all the different participants. As you know, this is a broad committee that represents many different public bodies, as well as city staff and volunteers as well. This has been ongoing for a number of years, and we're hoping that this tradition is able to continue this summer. Just as a note, this is an ad hoc committee, as the city cannot, City Council cannot develop standing committees. So each year, this committee is reappointed in the ad hoc capacity. And Ms. McCarleton is here as well, who has headed this up in her role as Parks and Rec Director for a number of years.
Ms. McCarleton?
Hi, good evening, everybody. As the City Manager said, you know, this is really a group effort. Many, all departments have a hand in pulling this off, and then obviously the volunteers. And I need to mention the Chair of this Committee, Mark Kuhn, who has been chairing this committee for over a decade now, and has put a lot of work into it. This is the 25th year for the Berkeley Cruise Fest. Last year was the 25th year for the Dream Cruise. We are hopeful that both the Dream Cruise and Cruise Fest will be running. I am continuing to meet with Dream Cruise, and right now, everything is moving forward as if we will be running that. We're continuing down that path. We need to set this committee up and start preparing as if it's going to happen, and also talk about the work that may be done on 12 Mile and the possibility of having to shift the location of the activities after the parade and shift where the parade goes as well. So the sooner we can start meeting virtually, then we're going to do that. And again, we'll see how everything plays out in terms of any orders that come down in terms of restrictions and go from there.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Questions for Ms. McCarleton or Mr. Baumgarten? Okay, not a lot of questions. Thank you, Teresa. It's obviously something that we are excited about every year. And as you mentioned, fully plan on it happening again this year. You mentioned the possibility of the construction on 12 Mile possibly changing the parade route a little bit. But at this point, we need to form the committee and start planning as if this is going to happen, which is certainly what we all hope. So thank you for being with us virtually this evening and for answering the questions that were not asked of you. So thank you for that. Seeing no additional, anybody, nobody's jumping in there, nobody's raising their hand. I don't see any yellow. So Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-0520?
Henin.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. R-0520 has passed. We now move on to our next item. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-620, matter of authorizing the amendment of the fiscal year 2019, 2020, operating budget as presented.
Is there a motion to approve R-0620?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Price with support from Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, we do budget amendments quarterly. The set of amendments brought to you before you today are, bring us up through the end of the month of March. And so the memo, the background information, as well as the calculations themselves, are provided to you by the Finance Director, Mark Pollak, who joins us this evening.
Mr. Pollak, thanks for coming.
Sure, happy to be here. I can handle any specific questions. I'll look at a couple of the larger amendments. The healthcare costs under active employees. Apparently, our retirees are healthier than our active employees because the estimates each year, it seems like I tend to shift a little bit more out of retiree and into active. It just depends each year, but Matt probably hasn't mentioned yet, but we did get good news from Gallagher on our self-insured plan that we are getting reduction in costs for next year, which is the first bit of good news we've gotten in a while. So my estimates for next year coming up in the budget, I'll adjust those down slightly, but that's a larger one. And then, of course, the purchase of the Cummings Home for demolition, that 161,008 was not budgeted. So we need to amend the budget to put that in. And then toward the bottom, the pension expenses, we're expecting again to, for council to put extra money in. Of course, that'll be controlled by your motion. We'll see where revenue ends up. I do expect we'll see some losses in revenues due to this situation. But we still may be able at year-end to put some money in. I think it's a good practice that council has adopted to put extra money in when it's available. And we'll see at the end of the year. I think there'll be some money available for you to put in. But either way, we'll adjust this again at year-end. But those are kind of the larger items. And then I did the same thing in a couple of the other funds in the water and sewer funds, same thing. Estimates for year-end additional contributions to bring us closer to full funding.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions for our Finance Director? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you, Mr. Pollak, for bringing this. Just a quick question on the increase in revenues that are part of a result of higher-than-expected PRE denials?
Yes.
Do we know of those denials, how many have actually gone through Board of Review and Michigan Tax Tribunal and/or? I'm just trying to get an actual idea of how the, you know, how final are these actual denials and whether these are actual realized revenues or not?
These are realized revenues because we get the money significantly after the actual denials. So though, if there's any adjustments to these numbers, it would be, it would occur at a later date. We get the revenue after the denials are made. And then if there's any adjustments down the road, those would occur later. But at this point, these are the actual numbers received to date is the reason I'm recommending a budget amendment.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sounds like we should know somebody in the county offices to, Treasurers Department.
Nobody about you.
Additional questions for our Finance Director? Do not see any. Does not appear to be anymore. Well, Mark, thanks for being with us this evening and answering the questions and presenting our budget amendments as you started at the beginning. We do this on a quarterly basis, or if something comes up as needed, we'll certainly make sure that we take action. Seeing no additional questions or comments from councilmembers, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-0620?
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. R-0620 has been approved. The next item on our agenda is public comments. As I mentioned, we have, doing this twice, this is for items that are not included on tonight's agenda. Same rules as before apply here, and if your concern needs to be addressed, please make sure that you give us your information so that we can make sure that somebody responds to you. Please raise your hand in the participant box.
For mayor, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, well, again, give them a couple more seconds just in case, as we all get used to this technology. Still no?
None.
Okay, then we will close our second public comments portion and move on to the next item on tonight's agenda, which are communications. At our meeting last week, I monopolized the communications portion of our events. I will not do so tonight. In fact, I will allow councilmembers to make their communications, and I will not step on them at the end. So, Ms. Mitchell, I can't just look to my left or my right where I'm supposed to go, and so I'm going to defer to you. Who's first?
Communications tonight begin with Councilmember Baker.
Councilmember Baker, you are up, sir.
Great, thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick updates from our various committees on the Downtown Development Authority perspective. Thanks to this council's decision last Tuesday, I'd like to extend our congratulations again to Ms. Jennifer Finney as our new DDA Director. She's transitioning from her current slash prior employer into full-time here at the city. But she's already been and continues to be very active in promoting information both to the businesses in our downtown district about tips and tricks and things to do and ways to stay active in the current situation, and also out to the public about the various businesses that we have and ways that folks can stay engaged. They have great partnerships with the chamber. I'm sure my colleague will talk more about some of the work being done to communicate the restaurants that are open and available for carryout service. What I would like to request is that for those of you, as you are comfortable and able, please consider ordering some carryout food from our local restaurants. Most of them have adopted some very wise best practices in terms of not permitting folks to come into the establishment, but rather pulling into the parking that's available, calling in, and then popping your trunk. And what they'll do is put the food safely and securely into your trunk. I think that's a good practice to minimize contact and social distancing, and yet still be able to help support our restaurants and stay safe at the same time. So for those, as you are able and feel comfortable to do so, please take advantage of those opportunities to help keep our Berkeley businesses going strong. The Technology Advisory Committee, as most of our committees will report, I'm sure, has not met in March, and there's no meeting scheduled in April. But as you can see around us, the notion of using technology to help us stay connected continues to be strong and well. And the committee looks forward to leaning in to help with additional opportunities here as we start to get adjusted to this context and then wherever it takes us from here on the other side. The Historical Committee, the museum remains closed along with all of the municipal buildings, but the work continues. Before things really shut down, many of the committee members took assignments to bring materials, checkout materials from the museum, and began scanning those and sharing those through the network drives and things like that. So work continues. A couple other updates from the committee. There is a, the oldest sidewalk in the City of Berkeley is stamped at the southeast corner of Brookline and Beverly. So if you're in that part of town, Brookline and Beverly, it is stamped 1915. Now, remember that Berkeley didn't become a village until 1923, and then later a city at 1932. So this predates Berkeley. We are working, the committee is working with DPW to extract that square of sidewalk and bring it to the museum. And at the city's expense, it will cover the cost of replacing that plank of sidewalk there so that we can preserve that historic step. So that's pretty exciting to see stuff that even predates the city itself even as a village. And finally, it was Bob Marley who once said, "You never know how strong you are until being strong is your only choice." And just because of the nature of the agenda, it's my opportunity to speak first here, but I'm sure many of my colleagues here in their communications will echo these sentiments. So this is certainly a Berkeley message here. I want to thank all of the residents for taking this seriously, doing what you can. I've got my homemade mask right here. If you see this mask bandit around town, this is, it's just me, friendly here. Do that stuff. And also thanks to our city employees and administration and staff for doing what you can to keep the city going. It's essential services, and we're so thankful for that. Also, thanks to our public safety officers and the EMS first responders for going towards these kinds of issues rather than retreating away from them. The work that they do is absolutely fantastic. And please, you know, maintain social distances you're able, stay home when you can, go out for essential services. And I'll just say that remember, you're not stuck at home, you're safe at home. So with that, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Price? Is that work? Councilmember Price?
Yes, sorry, please second to unmute. So I'm following in Steve's footsteps. So I wanted to open my communications this evening with a quote. This quote was written by Viktor Frankl in his memoir about his experience surviving the Holocaust. The memoir is called Man's Search for Meaning. He taught us that "Life is never made unbearable by circumstances, but only by lack of meaning and purpose." My husband is an emergency physician. I cannot imagine what he experiences during a shift or the decisions that he will need to make once his hospital runs out of lifesaving equipment. His purpose is to try and save the lives of those who have been infected by COVID-19. My family is following strict social distancing procedures, not because we are worried about being exposed to the virus, which we inevitably will be if we haven't been already, but because we don't want to pass it on to others before we even start showing symptoms. In a recent webinar that I attended by the Michigan Municipal League, Dr. Caldoon, the Chief Medical Executive and Chief Deputy Director of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, encouraged everyone in Michigan to do the same. Assume that you have been exposed, assume that you are a carrier, and distance yourself accordingly. This is how we will keep our hospitals from becoming even more overwhelmed than they already are. This is my current purpose and how I can do my part to stop the spread of the virus. This is our collective purpose, as individuals, as neighbors, as Berkeley, as an entire nation. It also warms my heart that Berkeley residents are finding additional meaningful ways to spend their time at home. Some are sewing fabric masks to donate to hospitals, spending their money with local restaurants deliveries, or fashioning face coverings, like Councilmember Baker showed, which the CDC now recommends whenever we must leave our. which the C D C now recommends whenever we must leave our homes. Many residents are checking in on family members, friends, and each other through phone calls or Zoom meetings, the safest ways for us to interact. Some of us are attempting to educate our kids or at least provide some sense of structure and security to them in this unpredictable time. But the most meaningful thing that most of us can do right now is follow the governor's order to stay home, stay safe, save lives. I know that it contradicts our nature as social beings. I know that it seems to infringe upon our basic freedoms. This is extreme and it's so hard, but so necessary. It is the only thing that will keep more neighbors from becoming critically ill before our hospitals are prepared to help them survive. So we must remember that life is never made unbearable by circumstances, but only by lack of meaning and purpose. Find your purpose, take care of yourselves and anyone else you're able to help from afar. And know that simply staying home, know that staying home even when doing so is far from simple, is a meaningful and lifesaving act. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Price. Certainly heed those words. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, it's a couple of things, as the Councilmember Baker mentioned, uh, the Chamber has been very active in this. They have, on the Chamber's website is a list of all the restaurants and their hours that has kept up to date. Also a list of many of the businesses, uh, whether they're open or closed. And, uh, so if you need to check out a business, that's the place to go. The Chamber's website, we've been working very closely with the new D D A Director, Jennifer Finley, and she's been doing an excellent job helping us out on that. So, uh, if you need information, you can go to that Chamber website. As you remember, at last Tuesday's meeting, we approved a, uh, event for Yad Israel. That event happened yesterday and today. Uh, I was there. They issued food yesterday to 700 families, uh, and today to 300 families. And it's a little bit of a struggle keeping it organized and keeping people away and people in the cars and stuff, but it worked very well. I think it was as safe as it possibly could be. Uh, I told them, do them my way or I'm going to shut it down. Hey, it worked. They listened to me. Occasionally it happens. Uh, but this is serious. I just want people to know that they have to follow the guidelines that Natalie just put out there. Uh, you have to be safe and just remember, facts, not fear. We don't want any rumors out there. We want just the facts out there and people to understand that and stay safe. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to take a moment also to recognize the first responders and all the healthcare workers and the sacrifices that they make every day to keep us safe and healthy. Um, I would also like to take a moment to recognize their families. Um, healthcare workers are in the middle of this crisis, this highly stressful situation, and then they come home. And I'm sure that families under these conditions are, um, you know, have increased anxiety and fear and all of those things. So, um, as we move into, so, for those of the, of you who celebrate Easter and Passover, I would like to suggest that we say an extra prayer of thanks um, for our healthcare workers, including our own Berkeley Public Safety, and especially the families, um, of all these people who are on the front lines truly every day working to keep us safe. Um, I would like to thank Parks and Recreation Director Teresa McCarleton, Library Director Matt Church, and Berkeley Public Safety for their quick and thorough response to my request for a list of Berkeley residents who either live alone or who might be isolated or senior citizens. And, um, they, they did that very quickly. And, um, so we're, we have this list, we're making wellness checks. Um, Parks and Rec staff, library staff, Teresa, Matt, and I have been making these calls. And you can see the numbers on the screen. If you want to be added to this list, if you're not on it, but want to receive phone calls, you may reach me, Bridgette Dean, at 248-930-0544, or Teresa McCarleton at 248-672-0295. And we'd be happy to, um, add you to that list. So, um, also, if you want to keep up to date on Parks and Recreation activities, please check the Parks and Recreation Facebook page. Um, everything will be laid out there. Um, making these phone calls, um, I'm going to tell you, I've enjoyed it very much. I've had great conversations with residents and, and they are very appreciative. But, but the, a bigger issue or the bigger picture here for me is reaching out to people who are isolated. Because we're in a time of great uncertainty and ev- everyone, I don't care who you are, is walking around with some degree of fear. And, you know, how we, how we manage that fear and anxiety is what's going to propel us forward. So what can you control? What choices can you make? Those were the things that I choose to focus on, um, because the rest, it just increases anxiety. If, um, that being said, if you want a phone call from us, we are happy to do that. If you think you need more, if you think that you want to talk to someone, a professional, for example, um, Common Ground runs a 24-hour crisis helpline, and that number is 1-800-231-1127. Their website is commongroundhelps.org, and you can see that on the screen. And Haven also has a 24-hour crisis line for domestic and sexual violence. You may reach them by calling 248-334-1274 or 877-922-1274. And their T T Y line is 248-972-2540. The website is haven-ocan.org. Um, remember, this too shall pass, and we are Berkeley strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you to all of the people who reached out to me and my wife to wish us well and to offer their support when finding out about our potential coronavirus exposure. It really means a lot to us. Um, fortunately, last week was the end of our quarantine and we're both fine. And the person that I know that contracted the virus is also now at home recovering. But like my fellow camp, council members, I really want to underscore the importance of staying home. You know, as the weather gets nicer or if the order gets extended, it's going to be really tempting to bend the rules. And there's going to be lots of ways, people try to rationalize that what they're doing is essential. But it's that kind of thing that will cause new spikes and infections and actually prolong this. So please, as long as the order remains, stay home, stay safe, save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, uh, similarly, as Councilmember Baker said, we'll be echoing a lot of, uh, each other, I think, tonight. But, um, I just want to say thank you, you know, to the mayor for your emergency declaration, the city staff for the quick action and nimble response to, you know, the ever-changing situation. You know, public safety, obviously, for being on the front lines of this. And residents generally who are just pulling together, each with a role to play in helping keep everyone safe and staying home, as was mentioned. Uh, thank you certainly to healthcare professionals and Councilmember Price, your husband as well, uh, grocery clerks, and other essential services as we navigate this. Uh, so what I would say is just, um, keep the faith, you know, listen to the experts, and we'll certainly come out more united. So be well and stay safe.
Thank you, Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to echo as well, as I put my newsletter this month, uh, it's fantastic to see such dedicated public servants that I have the pleasure of working with uh, continue to do their jobs in, in what has been the most adverse set of conditions that we've had probably in a generation. Uh, not a single person that I have talked to on, on my staff, uh, working in, in all of this has said, I know, I'm not comfortable doing my job. I don't want to do it. Uh, working from home is too big of an obligation. They all stepped up and said, how can I help? How can I serve? What do you need from me? And it's incredible to see. Uh, everybody from public safety, as has been mentioned here, but all the way down to and across all the spectrums, um, whether it's, you know, calling seniors, which is not somebody's job, but it's, it's a role that they could play and it's something that a public servant steps up and does, all the way down to like public works, they're, they're on kind of an active reserve right now, but the moment they're needed, they are here. And it's just fantastic to watch. Um, and it's, it's fitting of a city that has the low, the motto of we care. Uh, not only do the, the residents care, but also the people that serve this fine community do as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, like everybody else, um, our worlds, my world has been turned somewhat upside down. Uh, instead of going to meetings and to the office and to court, uh, my world's pretty much in this little home office these days. But, um, we're adapting well. Um, we've got, uh, seem to have a good communication arrangement with the city. We've been doing our very best to, um, to keep the city, uh, and the city administration apprised of, of, uh, legal developments arising out of this pandemic and the, uh, the governor's orders, the emergency orders. It's been very interesting because we're, it was really a first time for me operating in a, probably all of us operating in a, what seems to be a long-term state of emergency. And it's one unlike most of the legal issues that we deal with. Um, there is no precedence to research and to look for, for guidance. So we're trying to do the right things, the practical things, ranging from how do we run one of these meetings to interpretation and enforcement of the stay home safe, stay safe issue to even as recently as last night, when the governor issued yet a further, um, executive order relaxing the Freedom Information Act, uh, rules and deadlines. So, um, a lot of new twists being thrown every day. We're doing our best to stay on top of it, staying in touch with Mr. Baumgartner and, and the mayor and everybody else involved. And, um, I would say from my experience with other communities too, Berkeley is, is much or more on the ball than, than anybody at navigating its way through, um, through this crisis and doing its best to maintain transparency and good governance for the community.
Thank you. Well, as I mentioned, I was not going to, uh, comment further. My council members did a very eloquent job of not only telling stories, um, and sharing, you know, critical information, um, and, and keeping us all on the same page. The only thing that I have today is something that I wasn't able to do prior to this for a variety of reasons. But what kind of father would I be? I did introduce everybody to Olive. She is wearing her maiden Berkeley shirt. Yeah, she's, we have a limited shelf life here, but there she is. See, I put you on, you're good. Um, tremendous job, everybody. And, you know, I do want to thank all the council members, um, and city staff for being so adaptive to making sure that we're able to hold these meetings, continue to keep the city functioning even at this time. With that, that brings us to the end of our agenda today. Is there a motion to adjourn? Some moved?
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Olive says yes, and so do I. Yes. April 6, 2020, meeting of the 38th Council is adjourned.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.